Very get started, so I'd like to call to order the work session for county council work session. Tuesday, August 25th. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham. Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Pardini.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
For those listening, and Mayor Greenberg, I'm not sure if you were on, I said Councilmember Fockingham should be here shortly, so we'll start the meeting with him.
Okay. Okay, so we have one agenda item for tonight, and that's to talk about our proposed Equity Advisory Group. And for those that are joining us, let's see, we've got, let's see who, we've got four attendees right now. And the, we, in, the mayor and council attended online Crossroads Anti-Racism Organizing and Training Workshop. And, which was an introduction to systemic racism. And so that was the start of the process, so we're going to continue here with with our discussion on the next steps that we would like to take to implement dismantling racism and building racial justice. So who would like to start?
Well, I guess I just wanted to start maybe, because what you started with was that our goal was Equity Council, and I guess I maybe want to reframe that. I guess my thought is, the goal is to work towards what you said later, dismantling racism in Maplewood, systemic racism. And so I guess for me, the council is not necessarily the goal we're working towards. That may be a part of it at some point. I think Eleanor spoke to this last time, and I guess I just want to sort of I'm with her on what she said about, I think sometimes putting work on a committee takes the responsibility off you. And I feel like in that training, you know, one of the attendees made, I think a lot of people when we did that continuum, which we can talk about, but seemed stuck on like a committee thing, moving forward with work was the problem. And I think what the one woman said, committees aren't commitment, or something like that, where you know, it's, it takes the burden off people of actually doing the work. And I feel like we are a committee right now that's dedicated to this. And so I guess I would like to push forward focusing on like the steps we can take as a group to work towards that goal, one of which may end up being Equity Council. I don't know how others feel about that.
I, I agree Jenny, I think the, the end goal is to eliminate or reduce systemic racism in our city and create a more equitable city. And I think, you know, potentially an Equity Council was part of that. And I don't want that to be the sole focus of our conversation tonight, nor upcoming meetings. But I do, I think one of the takeaways that I had from the Gladiator Proposal and some of the other research that Eleanor provided was that, you know, potentially a steering committee is something that could be useful to get us to eventually an Equity Council. So that's something that I'd like to, you know, maybe investigate or talk about tonight is, you know, do we have interest in, in creating a steering committee to get us from point A to point B, C, D, E, and F.
Ask just a quick follow-up on that concept. With that, are you imagining a steering committee made up of constituents, or like a small working group of council members, or a combination of that?
Yeah, I'd say a combination, I think. Council members, boards and commission members, staff.
Okay.
And, you know, I was thinking along the lines of that, you know, it doesn't necessarily need to be department heads either, when we're talking about staff. I, I think if we empower the staff members that, you know, certainly interested members of the, of the public, as well as business owners, council. You know, it's just, it's just that, it's a steering committee, it's someone who's dedicated to the work that has the time to, time to do it.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering if anybody wanted to, since we have community members on the call, if we wanted to do a little bit of sharing out some of our take homes of what we learned, just in, in a sort of like making the parts that were powerful for us more transparent for folks.
I don't have a problem with that. I, I don't want to use the whole, you know, time you know, recapping what we did in the course of eight hours, so. So if, if someone would like to summarize the, you know, the, the workshop.
I was thinking each one of us shared like one or two things we thought were powerful takeaways.
Yes, I don't, yeah, I don't think, I don't think it was the idea of recapping everything. I think, yes, Eleanor, I, I like that idea.
Who would like to start this?
I'm willing to start since I, I volunteered the idea. So for me, the, the idea of that diagnosis determines treatment is or was a really powerful idea, and they, the idea that you have to have an understanding of racism as, I want to make sure I get it right. Race prejudice plus the misuse of power by systems and institutions. And that unless you have that, that definition that includes power dynamics and the misuse of power, you're, you're not going to be able to, to get at systems change. So that was really powerful for me. The, and then the other thing that I think is really powerful is the framework on white institutional values versus transforming institutional values. And those are, the transforming values are like collaboration and cooperation, both and thinking abundant worldview, and transparent communication and decision-making.
I'll go next, if that's all right.
Please.
Okay, um, I think the thing for me that continues to stand out even after some time has passed, since we did this, is the concept of commitment versus readiness, and what does it mean to take our values and deploy resources? And that, you know, you really, you can, you can be ready for the work, but not committed to it. And so I think that's a really helpful framework for me to think about my own actions, and also like our larger group actions and where we are in this discussion.
I think I thought it's always helpful to, something that they talked about, it's a good reminder that the idea that like our country was built with racism, like founded on it, was, it was woven into everything that was created. And so it's important to remember, it is everywhere, because that's what the system was created on. And so you know, to say it's not here is, is just not true. It's, it's kind of everywhere, and that's what we have to keep in mind. I thought the exercise we did about, you know, putting your institution on a continuum of sort of where you are in the process, and I think that was sort of, but it, to me is that our institution is maybe a little unique compared to the other ones, and that we are sort of made up of several different groups that may be in different places on that continuum. So different departments or different staff may need, or different ordinances or whatever may need, you know, maybe different spot on those. So we'll have to be cognizant of that as we work through it.
And Karen, would you like to add?
Um, yeah. I did. First of all, it, it helped me to understand what systemic racism, racism actually is, because not everybody just knows that. We have to be taught and trained, and we have to have our eyes open. So it really did a lot of that for me, and got me thinking about a lot of things. And also how to consider that we are upholding, you know, white privilege and not even realizing it. We're doing it in unintentional ways, so we have to be listening and more intentional about what we are doing in, in all ways. So one of the things that, I love the continuum because it helped. I like things that tell me, this is where you are, and this is where you need to be, and it kind of guides you along. So I thought that was excellent. And one thing that I did want to mention, I think it was in the Forward Through Ferguson, it said that we should really help research what racial vision policies look like at the municipal level, and write like a policy. This is our, you know, research, how to do that, how to write a policy that we, you know, and I thought that was good. Because if you want to know, you know, where you're going, I think you need to know what the policy is to work towards. So that was my takeaway.
And I, I agree with the, the continuum being a really good tool to go from exclusive to fully inclusive. You know, defining where we're at. And the fact that we're not necessarily at the same stage in each of the, each of the categories of, of, of action that we take. And so I think that what that continuum did was help the process of establishing goals. And you know, so if the idea is to, not just to find the problem, but to solve the problem, obviously, we're going to need to establish goals. And so, you know, the, the question that I have is, you know, how, how are we going to do, go about doing that? We have the council. We have the, we're talking about a steering committee. We have the possibility of doing a commission or an advisory group. And, you know, I need, you know, I think what we, one of the things that we need to talk about tonight is what is the process going to be to get to where we want to be? So I see Sean that you've joined us, and what we were, what we were talking about here was some of the takeaways from the workshop. And you're, you're the last one, you know, to join us. So is there anything you'd like to share about your experience with the workshop? Besides the fact that you're muted?
Yeah, I wasn't the only one.
Sorry about that. The, just, just some of the, of the tools, the continuum, the power analysis that they talked about, and the fact that I now understand the language a lot better when talking about this. So all the way around, I thought it was absolutely fantastic that we went to it. You know, I have lots and lots of things I liked about it, but, you know, the big one was our ability to, 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 to measure our progress and just framing everything with that power analysis was very, very, that was pretty powerful for me to, to to learn about, really. I mean, you never really think about it, but when you realize that you're, you've probably been at the center of it for a while, it's, it's, it's quite eye-opening. That's all I have.
Okay.
I did just want to contribute my, my key takeaways as well. That at, at risk of repeating everyone else, which I won't do, just to add a personal, a personal note that just courageous conversations, so right from the get-go, talking about how to have those conversations, and how to listen to understand, which I, I think is, is challenging for me personally. So I need to listen more and talk less sometimes. And also just the realization that we're at the beginning of this journey, I think, and we have a long way to go. And we all know the very, very slow glacial pace of city government, so I feel like we need to step it up a little bit and, and really run to catch up, so.
Okay. So hopefully that will give some of the participants an idea of, of what we had discussed in the workshop. And so I see that we have six people joining us tonight. And so, and for those listening in, you know, when, you'll have an opportunity to contribute when we have the, one of the two or both of the public forums during the regular council meeting that will follow at 7:30. So so I guess, you know, what, what we need to figure out, we're going to, what the next steps are that we're going to take. And does anyone have a, a clearer picture than me? There's a, you know, monumental task that we have here. And I'm not sure, you know, how we should go about tackling it.
Well, it seems like this is where we can utilize the services of people who, you know, can help us. Eleanor had sent us, it seemed, I read through some of the RFPs, like the different requests for assistance, and it seems like there's a couple of things we have to do. We first have to identify what the issues are. And then, once we do that, determine what our plan is to tackle those issues, and then going forward, sort of systemically, what we need to place so that those things don't happen again. So I guess it seemed like, for me, the next step was figuring out, are those two separate processes? Are they all one? One consultant? And then, you know, it seemed like that was the next main step overall. I don't know.
Did anyone else read through some of the additional resources on the NLC website? Because there's some, oh, the Advancing Racial Equity in Your City, that talks about like six action steps that you can do immediately, things like that. I think that, you know, there's, the NLC obviously is something that we already are members of, so I think there's a lot of resources there that, that we have at our fingertips that we could, that we could utilize.
I did read through that. Is that where it's, it's got six steps, and the first one being set an example and strike the right tone? Is that the ones you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I did read that as well. So some of those are just observe and listen, make a public declaration, that kind of thing. And I think that kind of goes in with what I was talking about. If you make a declaration of what, you've got to kind of define what, what racial, you know, equity is, sort of. Our policy, you know, somehow to, to define that. I don't know how you would write that policy or resolution. I don't know how, you know, who does that, or how we, but I think we could figure out how, how to do that from other municipalities maybe that have done it, or from the NLC, or someplace, you know, help us to, to write a policy of what equity looks like in our city, or what we want it to look like.
Yeah. Yeah. Can I jump in here? I really appreciate Sandy's comment about looking at models of other steps and Karen's reminder about how important it is to outline your racial equity vision statement or policy statement. And I think that that actually, and Jenny was talking about the racial equity plan comes after you identify what the issues are, which is coming, going to come from your audit. But the, and that prior to that is, is what y'all are talking about, the like outlining a, a plan, and I think typically organizations, that it can be quite a process just to do some of the capacity building and conversations to get to that racial equity policy. So that was, so one of my questions when I had laid this out was that, you know, is it one, like if, if we do an RFP to get some assistance, so that we have kind of a bucket to structure this for us, since there are people that, people and teams that, that do this, that help guide and facilitate these processes. You know, it could be that there's something that is pretty similar to what Gladiator laid out, which is like there's some training, capacity building that is like, we sharpen, we, we get practice sharpening our analysis. And that the outcome of that is our racial equity vision or policy statement. We can just go grab a racial equity policy off of the NLC or other sites, but we could also make it part of a probably rather a more condensed RFP. And then the like Equity Audit and Racial Equity Plan could be a separate RFP, because those are quite a big bucket as well.
One of the things that I would like to explore is that we know at some point in the near future, we were planning on doing a community survey. And so, you know, we talked about listening to understand. So, you know, my question for the council is, do we want to come up with survey questions for constituents or in our businesses, or do we want to have, you know, do that through the guidance of, of a consultant?
I actually had noted on my notes today, just following up on where are we in that RFP process for our community survey.
Yeah, that was on my notes too, because I, I didn't know if we're, go ahead with that. You know, we, we didn't do it because of the COVID for a while, but now I think we should go forward unless we aren't going to go that route. I didn't know.
We have, I believe it was three firms, all, we can, they're all waiting patiently, so if the council wants to go ahead and make a selection, we can go ahead and move forward with that.
I think it would be helpful to interview the firms, you know, to find out what their process is.
We can set that up too, however you'd like to do it. Just let me know, and I'll make it happen.
Would their processes be somewhat outlined in the application materials they sent in?
Yeah.
Which, it should be, you know, I, I think it's still important that we, you know, that we sit down with them and be able to ask questions and get, get a feel for how, how that gets implemented. So I, I would suggest that we, we do that in the near future and and determine whether it's one of those three firms, or whether we want to bring anyone else into the, into the process that we feel, you know, perhaps more comfortable with. So
Could we, if we're going to do that, could we set a deadline for ourselves where we agree that we like each, we all read the three proposals and that we're going to discuss on them?
Certainly. But what is, what does everyone feel comfortable with? You know, the, the proposals obviously won't take a long time to, to go through. But setting up interviews, I think, you know, it, you know, by the time we're, we're able to do that, we'll have, we should have time to, to review the, the proposals. And
I guess one thing though, I wanted to note is that I think we're getting a packet tonight for manager search, so for me, I, I would like, I think that takes precedent right now, and so I think that's a lot. I think Karen, you looked at the proposals, and you were the only one, they're pretty fit. They, like, they're pretty
Yeah, I, I, there was a lot of reading, and I mean, a lot of stuff in there. I mean, I got, got it down to where there was two that I was, you know, that I was partial. And there was one that, to me, clearly didn't have enough experience. Now, that was my take on it, you know. But it, it took me a while, and, you know, I, and I'd have to reread it, because I don't remember, that's been, yeah, a long time. But I agree, though, I think we need to do the city manager search materials that we're going to get first.
Yeah, I just wanted to be cognizant of that in our planning with, and not over.
Anthony, I, I remember, if I remember correctly, that the proposals were sent, I think, early in the spring, like March. And I think it may have actually been while I was out of the country. And then, you know, we all kind of dropped the ball on that. I don't remember ever getting them again, because that, the we transfer file expired.
Yeah, that's right.
Can you resend that?
Absolutely.
Just so, at least this time I'll remember to download them, so that I don't have to, so the link doesn't expire. I apologize for that.
I was going to ask the same thing, so you're
I'd like to request the original RFP as well, since I'm new here and was not around for that.
Good point.
Well, you could just send it to all of us, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. I also appreciate being mindful about what we have on our plates. Given my personal work schedule, it's picking up very quickly and, in the next few weeks, and the advising the city manager search is, is just a high priority for, for all of us.
I, I did want to note, and so I had highlighted this, at least as part of the Gladiator proposal, like part of their thing was community feedback. So that was my question. I felt like maybe some of that community piece wouldn't, for this, would necessarily be done through the survey, and we can still do that. They would also be doing that. So I think we can move forward on this, maybe without necessarily having to get the community survey done as quickly. But I don't.
Yeah, I agree. There are kind of, it's different types of data collection. They're like, they're different data points, and they're different, they're different samples of the population that, that give us different information.
And I think, to, I guess to circle back around to the idea of our vision, policy, resolution, I had some questions about, you know, does that happen now, or does that happen later in the process? And I still don't really know the answer to that. I think I'm seeing in, in different, along different timelines, that, you know, if we make a resolution or policy, or just a, a statement immediately, that it's not necessarily, you know, that, that we can't revise that or reframe that as we get farther down the road. But you know, I do think just making, you know, some form of resolution sooner rather than later, I think is still, you know, maybe something that we need to do earlier.
I agree. We definitely need to come up with a resolution.
Yeah.
Just expressing our commitment to do work, and then later down. Yeah, I think that's good. I agree with that.
Yeah. And I'm remembering the MRH model, that they, you know, they passed their Commitment to Racial Equity Resolution in early 2017, and they only just passed their racial equity policy in early 2020. And they had the, they had basically that And they had the they had basically that beginning process of capacity building that ended with the the policy, I believe, was their first RFP.
So do we want one or two people to sort of work on putting that together and then send it to the group to get thoughts? Is that a good next step? As a sort of as an initial? I can volunteer myself since I suggested. I mean, and you know, it'd be nice for someone else to.
Do you mean, do you mean putting the resolution together?
Yeah, yeah. So if that's that's a solid thing that I think we can we can do and do it relatively quickly since it's sort of a broad.
I'm happy to work on that.
All right.
And I second your self nominations.
I'm happy to chip in too if I can be helpful.
Yeah, and then we can send it around to everybody and everyone can put in their two cents to start somewhere.
Sounds good. I have faith in you.
Yep, sounds good.
Do we want to talk a little bit more about what possible, whether we want an RFP or two and what the first one looks like? Or are we not there yet?
Yeah, I I think that's the next sort of concrete step. I think we have to decide. I think did ever I read some, I think most of the examples or some of them. Again, it's it almost seems like you you have to break it up into like identifying and then helping, I mean, long solving. But I don't know if, I know you said that too, Eleanor. I don't know if everyone else agrees.
Well, if if there's a way that we can eliminate some redundancy, I, you know, I know there's opinions expressed that the equity you know, questionnaire process would, you know, could could be different than the community survey. Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can combine those so that when we ask the questions, I think we're going to have a hard enough time getting feedback from everyone, especially in this climate. I'm not sure what percentage of the census has been counted, but it's obvious that there's problems getting contacting people and getting feedback from them. So if there's if there's a way that we can do that, I'd like to see that happen, but and maybe we could, in the process, save taxpayers a little bit of money, but also save them, you know, time. So that's that's just my thought with regards to you know, when we start looking at RFPs and how they're going to conduct the listening process.
I would tend to agree with you, Barry, only because I think that when you speak of racial equity, that is a community wide issue that affects almost every aspect of every person's life, whether it's work at home, school, walking down the street, it doesn't matter. I think it I think it would be good if we combine those in some way, shape or form, because people can have a lot of questions about that now and what we're doing about it. And they're still going to have concerns about streets and, you know, other things too as well. I mean, it's not. I don't think those are exclusive of each other. So yes, I'm I'm agreeing with you that we should probably just make it as part of the one questionnaire. As I sat here and thought about it, I, you know, the racial equity thing is too obviously entrenched everywhere. So it makes sense to include it even in a in a regular survey.
Right. I think the idea was that, and I think I think when you look at those was like part of what they do as a racial equity is they get community feedback. But again, I do think it's important that like Eleanor was saying, they're different sample sizes. So like any, any survey we send out should definitely include them. But I also think I don't want that community wide survey to hold up the process, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that does. No, I mean, I I understand. I mean, I think and I think I was speaking more to our survey that we were talking about that we should include regardless of what another company is going to do for us in terms of of surveying the community. I think ours should always include those kinds of questions to make sure that we're on the right track and and the city feels and the constituents feel that they're on the right track. So.
Appreciate this, like both and thinking here. And I think one, if we're going to interview the firms, we could ask them to include some racial equity oriented questions about people's experiences or and we already asked, we said we wanted to collect more demographic data than has been collected in the past so that we could disaggregate the data better this time around.
And Eleanor, are you thinking that we could get that information through the survey process? I don't feel comfortable that the census is going to yield any type of accurate result in terms of, you know, our our demographics in the city.
I mean, I I think when we were talking with Mr. Traxler about this before and reviewing what had happened last time and we had that the firms, most of them offer some sort of electronic online survey submission, but that they can also offer mailings and or phone calls. So I think if they have diverse ways of reaching out, that they could probably capture a representative sample. And we can look for that when we're you know, if if getting diverse perspectives is part of our goal, when we review the three proposals, we can be looking for that as one of the things that we're is a requirement for us.
Oh, yeah, that's that's an interesting microcosm of the the whole equity process is getting that feedback from everyone that we want to get feedback from. You know, we talked about how voting might inhibit you know, feedback from from disenfranchised groups. And so we, you know, this is going to be a challenge and, you know, to figure out how how we get everyone, you know, included in this. So.
I think and I'm hopeful that organizations that do equity work, I mean, I don't, I guess we're talking about both, but like that they have experience in doing that and we can certainly ask them about that. And when we're when we're interviewing them, what's your experience and how successful we've been?
I agree.
Community survey firms and the equity facilitation firms both will be experienced in in all of these things.
Okay.
So would it make sense for, I guess, if we're in agreement, I guess. Hi, Sarah's cat. In agreement. Like if we want to move forward with an RFP process, this is the next logical step to look at, I think, the examples that Eleanor gave us, they're pretty good. And we have sort of a template of the other stuff from our city manager one, like our what our city is like, all that stuff that we would just sort of fill in the sort of what we're looking for. But I guess that's something we all need to look at, maybe, and figure out what what we think the RFP should include. Does that make sense? Or no?
No, obviously, we have to define the problem before we start solving it here. You know, or we can have, you know, another approach is to have these firms define the problem based on their experience and see which one most closely, you know, aligns with our you know, our goals and strategy.
Well, I think we have to tell them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have to scope it out.
Yeah.
Processes are only successful if you scope it well.
And I think if you go on those links, I clicked on like I looked at the one for let me find it, but like you know, Westland, Oregon, like like Eleanor had noted, that's the earlier stage of where we're at. And it was really good. It had, it was really sort of laid out what they were looking for. You know, but we may want a little bit of something else. So I think I think it was a good place to start to see what would be included even in our P. And I don't, I don't think that's something we can give and just say, staff, create something because I mean, they're not, they have to know what we want these people to be looking at if that that make sense.
Yeah, I mean, I I hope council plays a heavy role in creating this RFP. I I don't know. We could either set another deadline for ourselves to like all read the samples and come back with like what we think should be in our RFP, or we could choose a subcommittee to like work going through that and presenting like a proposal to the the rest of council.
Based on the fact that we're going to be, you know, prioritizing the city manager search. When do we, when do we want to set a deadline for you know, assembling RFP? You know, questions and have a work session to deal with it.
I kind of, I kind of think if you read them, you sort of quickly, like, I don't think we have to write a whole RFP. I think we just need to look at this and like the meat of it, that like what we're asking them to do for us won't be that hard for you to sort of figure out. Like, like I said, I think we have a template that you can just insert sort of the substantive stuff into. So I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't think it will take you that long to kind of look at it and get an idea. But so maybe by our next council meeting, is that? Or?
I think that's reasonable, only because our resolution should be kind of what we're trying to accomplish. And, you know, plugging that in, I mean, into an RFP shouldn't be that difficult, it would seem to me anyway. I mean, I was kind of hoping to look for the resolution is to be. Yes, we recognize it. Yes, we've we're committed full force and and, you know, taking the steps necessary in order to identify you know, what's in our charter ordinances, policies, that kind of thing to 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 begin to break down the institutional racism. So I'm assuming that our resolution is going to have some form of of what we're actually looking for or what we need to accomplish, you know, in order to put in the RFP and somebody who can help us along with that process. Right? I mean, is that is that not the is it, we have to get more detailed than that or?
So I guess I understood sort of initial, yeah, I guess I don't know. I think it's helpful if you sort of open one of the RFPs, like, for instance, I'll just like this first one's like assess, assess our culture and do some data analysis, do some policy review, maybe, you know what I'm saying? Like, I I don't.
There.
I guess I don't know what a general resolution would look like till I started looking at them, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess where I'm going with this is that you know, I mean, I would imagine, I want to look at one of the RFPs, but I can't imagine them being much different because everybody's in the in the same boat. We needed an audit. We need people to guide us with, you know, proven methodologies in terms of changing ordinances and wording and all that kind of good stuff to make this happen. I mean, it's not it's not that we're reinventing the wheel here. So it's it's pretty straightforward. You know, it from what I've seen, but I am going to look at the rest of the RFPs, but you know, we're we're trying to solve a, obviously a universal problem. It's not the, you know, it's not any different than it would be in, you know, Webster Grove or, you know, some other municipality.
Yeah, I agree. I think the point is we have to tell someone who's going to draft it what we want in it. That's what I'm getting at.
I think.
Gotcha.
So I'm wondering if if it's not reinventing the wheel and it's sort of picking you know, some models that are more aligned with the stage we're at, which is the earlier rather than the later stage. I wonder if we could just discuss now the basics of what the bullet points are that we would want the to be included in what we do. And then if Jenny and I and maybe Sarah are like a subcommittee kind of working on a draft resolution, we could also just bullet out a few things that we would want in an RFP and like send that to council as well. Which would might need more time than.
And I like that. And I think that, you know, with the course that we took, I I think, you know, placing us in the on a on the continuum line for a consultant would help greatly with what methodologies are going to need, you know, for one to two. That's a totally different place to start than at a three to four. So if we say, hey, we're a one to two, and by the time we're done with you, we want to be, you know, midway, three, midway, four in our first iteration of trying to get things taken care of. You know, I mean, I think that's, I mean, that's something they can put their their teeth, you know, teeth into and and that's why I like the continuum so much because you know, I want to be able to measure in some way. You can, you know, this is a pretty complex, complex thing, but we need to be able to measure, have some kind of measurement anyway on where we're at with that as an institution.
I guess my only hesitation, I guess, why I wanted everybody to look at it and everyone to share their opinion upfront is that I don't want the same voices to always be the ones like pulling it out. I feel like that's part of the problem is if is that someone may look at it differently than me and be like, this is really important based on my experience. So I guess is why I was sort of pushing for us all to kind of look at it and see what we take from it and what we think is our starting point and then go from there because we may all, I mean, we weren't all necessarily on the same had the same viewpoint about where we were on the continuum. So I guess that's why I thought it would be helpful.
Oh, no, I'm not. We should do that. We should absolutely.
Yeah.
No, no, no question at all. I guess I'm more thinking out loud that you know, when I'm looking at an RFP, I want to be able to tell them where I think the council thinks that we're here.
Right. I I was not, I was more addressing Eleanor's point about Sarah and she and I just pulling it out. I think I think it's helpful if we all pull it out and then maybe three of us and it doesn't have to be us three, can put it sort of together would I think be great, but.
That sounds good.
So back to the original timeline, does everyone think that they can look at those RFPs before our next council meeting and get the comments back?
I couldn't look at them and come prepared to talk. What do you do? What do you mean about get comments?
Well, in terms of what our priorities would be for the RFP. So if there are, what, I think, three different RFPs samples that you gave us, because the Columbia, Missouri, that was not.
And I think and we, I think it's possible that Anthony, Mr. Traxler was able to get that for us. I think Anthony, you emailed me something. Maybe.
The Colombians?
Yeah.
If you just want to shoot me an email, anything you want, we'll make sure.
Yeah, well, there. So I pulled four. We have the Gladiator sample and then I think that Anthony was able to get the Columbia one. We can, we can yeah, make sure.
So the the expectation then is that we all review those RFPs and what choose what our priorities are for.
Or just what you think is where we should start, I guess, not just what you think kind of overwhelming, you know, and so I think it's just to just to try to figure out where you're supposed to start and what you think you know, what makes things go together, make sense for us.
Yeah, so I'm I'm hearing, review it, look at it at at all the RFPs and basically try to figure out in your mind where we're at. where we're at and what we want to accomplish. And any, you know, comments or notes, you know, therein, so we can all sit down with all of these and then come to come some, you know, some kind of consensus saying, yeah, I think this is right. That's what I'm gathering that you want us to do. Read them over.
Council meeting, is that right?
And have thoughts on where where we should start, at least where we should start and any concerns that you may have that need to be addressed. So we can make a, some kind of general document for somebody to completely write the RFP for us. Is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Okay, so I just have to clarify the where we should start. Are you talking about specifically the scope of work within the RFP? Like, in other words, what do we want that particular consultant to start with?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm thinking. Yes.
Okay, all right.
And I think for me, it was whenever I was making this document, that it was helpful for me to actually reread the proposal that Barry had sent us because it helped me just visualize what a process could look like and sort of pick up, you know, which of these pieces feels like it's useful for us now, which pieces don't feel useful now? Where could we get, like, I think creating an equity policy wasn't explicitly in that one, but like, you know, it could be. So that was also helpful to me when I was like putting together this document, research document.
Does everyone feel that that's doable for them by our next meeting? Because I understand if it's not, it's there's a lot.
Yes.
That's September 8.
Yes.
Am I on the right month?
Yes, that will be our next meeting.
The day after Labor Day, just so everyone is clear.
Yeah, off Labor Day to work on it then.
Could we push back the resolution or could we choose one to do first?
Yeah, I think that's fine. Yeah, but let's do the RFP first and then, because we'll have a better, at that point, we'll have a better understanding of where we want to go and all that, so we can really make a nice solid resolution, you know, committing us to this process. No, I, yes, I, I concur.
I think that's a both and.
So do we want to schedule the discussion for the resolution at a work session in the following following meetings, which would be September 22nd, I guess?
Well, do we want to have a timeline for the packet of resumes we have in here? City manager search? I mean, when are we gonna fit that in there somewhere?
Let me ask.
September 10th, just remember, we're doing our sunshine.
Oh, that's right.
Just as a reminder in there, right?
I'm not, I'm not, the sooner you do the city manager search, the better, because if people have their resumes out there, it's likely they may have resumes out to other municipalities. It's obviously the council's decision, but I would absolutely prioritize that. You don't want to lose your number one candidate because they've accepted a position elsewhere.
Do you do you feel that we're gonna have a a lot to deal with at the next two meetings, Anthony?
I can, I mean, I can, we can set that agenda to where we don't have that much. You're gonna have a couple of planning commission items, but those should take all that long as what is possible. One may have some attendees because it's a near residential, it's gonna be a new restaurant, but I could always talk to city attorney Hessel, we could push back the sunshine law seminar that's in-house, we could do that anytime. So then that way you could review the city manager applications at the next meeting, and that would be my suggestion, because again, you you want to make that a priority.
Yeah, I mean, I was also like, if you remember back to like July, August and December of last year, there was a time when we were having like one to two extra meetings per week to work on city manager hiring business. I was figuring that we would probably enter a phase of that again, you know, and of course, was hoping to get as much advance notice on all the meetings as possible to plan around.
The meeting you guys are gonna have for the city manager search would be closed session. So and I've told Mr. Slavin typically meet the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month, so that would most likely be preferable to the council, but I told him after I talked with you today, we would get you know, some available dates. It's gonna be via Zoom, so it shouldn't be difficult for him to get ahold of you. And I'm kind of, again, I don't mean to reiterate this, but he's had those resumes for a while.
Yeah.
And I'm willing to do.
Eleanor, to your point, I think we were doing a lot of the work that he's doing for us now. So my hope is we shouldn't have be having two meetings. Should be having one meeting with him and then he's gonna go and he's gonna schedule, you know what I mean? So I am hoping that that's not the case. So.
That's what you're paying him to do, Jenny.
Yeah, so would it make sense to plan the closed session for our next meeting and
I will follow up with him, I will follow up with him to see if he's available. I indicated you'd probably have it between 6:00 and 6:30. And he said, you know, we'll look at the second meeting in September. My answer was, we'd like probably to do it in the first, but I need to talk with the council first. Again, there are other positions open even in the area, Webster.
I know. That makes me nervous. I can also meet on.
Yeah, do we need to do it sooner?
I can meet on Mondays, I can meet on the other Tuesdays, like.
Yeah.
I mean, you're talking, it's gonna be ten applications, it shouldn't be that difficult. And again, you're not making the decision that first night, you're meeting with them. So I gotta ask him. I mean, right now, I told him, I'm hoping the eighth, but we can do it sooner, sooner the better.
I say the first, give us.
I'm fine with that.
Yes, or that Monday, which is the 31st, or Tuesday, the first, I'm I'm good with both of those dates.
Okay, so I'll let him know if everyone's okay with it. It could either be six o'clock on Monday, the 31st, September the first, or Tuesday, September 8th. Give us one of those dates.
Yeah, but the sooner the better. I don't even.
I'll let him know.
Or even, oh, no, that's Labor Day. Sorry.
The seventh.
About normal time.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll let him know, we prefer the 31st or the first, and if not, we could do the eighth.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So I would vote to keep the sunshine training when it is, if that's okay with everybody.
And then in light of this, I feel like we should move the RFP realistically probably move the RFP stuff.
Yeah, to the 22nd.
Yeah, or just or schedule another work session on an off Tuesday.
Either of those will work fine for me. Tuesdays are usually pretty good for me, so.
Yeah, Tuesdays are good for me if we need to do an earlier one.
I'm wondering, after we meet with Mr. Slavin, what the next step is. So I'd hate to schedule it if we needed to meet the next two, you know what I mean, if we're trying, maybe it makes sense to put this for the second?
Yeah, well, I guess we'll just do the RFP. It's the second meeting of the month, and then after our meeting with Mr. Slavin, we'll be able to
Yeah.
figure out.
Keep in mind, I won't be in that meeting, but all you need, someone needs to do is say, hey, you know, we'd like to meet this day. Can you go ahead and set it up? And I will. It's gonna be kind of a fluid process because you don't know how many interviews you're gonna have to go through or when those are gonna be there. But Jenny, your comment was good. You're probably gonna be having interviews with the candidates coming up hopefully soon.
Yeah.
Because then you remember, they're gonna have to give notice. It's still gonna be a long process, and I just don't want to lose anybody.
Agreed. All right.
Has everyone received the information?
I got, I got my packet a while ago.
I just got mine, that's why.
Have not been outside.
Have not checked yet.
Okay. You probably get a knock at your door pretty soon. So.
They knocked at my door, too.
Okay, so it sounds like obviously, our priority is to pursue the the city manager selection process. For the record, I can be available any day. So if if schedules change or anything, I can, I should be available for for closed session, for work sessions, for anything that we need to do. So and then to recap, we talked about discussing the RFPs, I believe, at the second meeting in September, which would be the 22nd. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I have.
Okay.
And I, I think with that much lead time, we could probably draft the resolution by that date, too.
Or at least have done some research, or at least have done some research to kind of see what it may look like.
Yeah.
And send it around and you might, you know, some of us might be able to help with the wording. So okay. Is there anything else that we want to address before the meeting tonight? We've got about 25 minutes before we start with the normal council meeting. Okay, if we're good, then do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will read adjourn at 7:30 tonight for our normal council meeting and I'd like to thank people that also joined us from from their homes, too, and hopefully will join us in the next next meeting. So we'll see you in about 25 minutes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.